Everybody, please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great republic which stands on one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, welcome. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Show all council members are in attendance and would entertain the motion for approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those same sign. Tonight, we have three public hearings. If you'd like to address the council, please step forward to the podium, give your name and address for the record. So that it doesn't look like I'm doing this out of spite, I want to say that this body is bound by very strict rules from the Iowa Open Meetings Law, which means they can talk about whatever's posted on the agenda, they cannot talk about something that isn't posted on the agenda. And I know it's pretty clear now what I'm talking about, but if we are talking about West Broadway, it's relative to Segment One from 36th to 33rd. That's all legally they can talk about tonight. But we'll start with the first public hearing, which is in regard to Resolution 16-314. This resolution authorizes no action be taken regarding proposals associated with property located at 1901 Second Avenue. Legally described as lots 1 through 5, Block 7, Everett Sedition is proof of publication on file.
Yes, it is.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Is there anyone wishing to speak to the council in regards to this matter? Seeing done, was council's pleasure.
I'd make a motion to take no action on the 1901 Second Avenue property.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those same sign. This time and place for public hearing is advertised on the matter of Resolution 16-315. A resolution making final determination on potential transfer of interest in real property to Rivers Edge Apartments LLC and taking action approving and authorizing the execution of a development agreement with Rivers Edge Apartments LLC is proof of publication on file.
Yes, it is.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Is there anyone wishing to address the council in regards to this matter?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Jay Noddle, Noddle Company's 2285 South 67th Street in Exarban Village. I am here to answer any questions that you may have. We thank you for all your hard work with us along the way.
Any questions for Mr. Noddle? All right, thank you. Anyone else? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion?
I think this is just another fantastic piece in the puzzle as we continue to the exciting transformation of our entrance to our West End. I think it's a fantastic way to increase good housing stock and mixed-use development, the wave of the future, and I commend all those involved in it.
Anyone else? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those same sign. And then Resolution 16-316 is a resolution approving the plans, specifications, form of contract, and cost estimate for West Broadway Reconstruction Segment One project is proof of publication on file.
Yes, it is.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Is there anyone wishing to address the council in regards to this matter? Could you give us name and address for the record, please?
Yes, sir. Hi, David Drake, 2909 Sixth Avenue, Council Bluff, lifelong resident of Council Bluff and owner of Metro Pond on 311 West Broadway. I'm here to show support of the West Broadway Reconstruction. My only concern on the first phase is why they're not including medians in the first phase, but we're going to include them in the rest of the phases. Otherwise, I'm 100 percent for the project.
Thank you. Any... Thanks.
No answers?
You know, everybody's looking at me. I would tell you that Public Works today, the city's engineer said it was because of the shortness of the blocks. It's because the blocks are a little shorter from 36th to 33rd, there really wasn't anywhere to put in medians that would still allow cars to turn at the intersections. Other areas where they were chosen to be installed were in locations that didn't cause as much turning problems, for example, in front of TJ, in front of the strip mall between 17th and 18th, and in front of Timothy Lutheran Church and the CHI Health Clinic. So I think that's why they chose them. The statement made by the city engineer was that the consultant chose them and he actually wasn't familiar with exactly what criteria he used to choose where he put them, but it would appear he put them in places where...
I just want to show my support for the project and let everyone know that we're, as a group of people that are here, that we're still against the medians and the future projects.
I understand.
So...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, is there a motion from the council? Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion?
Do we... Yeah. Read this, Nate.
I'll forgive it.
I strike that if second concurs, and I would move separately as follows. I would move that we approve a resolution approving all plans and specifications for Segment One of West Broadway, except for those pertaining to bus shelters.
Second.
All right, we have a amended motion on the table. Is... In a first and a second, is there a discussion on that?
I'd just say that at the study session, and even prior to the study session, we've had a number of discussions with regard to the entire rehab project. This resolution concerns just the first segment of that project. The budget for this first phase is rather steep. And if these are shorter blocks and we're doing less with this first segment than we are for the other segments, that suggests that the city is going to have some potential financial challenges getting this project done in the future. The other thing that was discussed was the fact that the city plans on using rather innovative asphalt surfacing practices that have shown promise elsewhere in the country. It's relatively newer technology, so it comes with challenges, as does concrete work that one normally sees around the city. So that's something that hopefully will be getting more information out to the public so that they understand the difference between this surface and more traditional surfaces that we see crumbling around the city all the time. So hopefully, this technology will be marked improvement. Noting the potential financial challenges and how this project is slightly less modest or slightly more modest than the other segments, cost will be a factor, and the medians will be a factor in not only the cost consideration for this segment, but also future segments. And I stand behind my earlier stated reservations about those medians, and I'll stand by to be convinced otherwise.
Oh, please, no. Everybody knows I voted against the West Broadway Master Quarter Plan solely on the fact that the medians... I will be supporting Phase One tonight, because there is no median in Phase One. And so that's where I'm at with it, and I just wanted to explain that because I did vote against the Master Quarter Plan.
I am very supportive of this project. We are the first council and mayor in 66 years to spend any considerable amount of money to improve the West End's infrastructure. I think it's an area that's been neglected for a very long time, 66 years. It was 1949, '50, that year, year and a half period of construction period of time in which West Broadway was last west, West Broadway, west of the vine, was last reconstructed. And I'm very glad to see us finally get a start of this. I think there's been a very good job working cooperatively together to get this done. I think working together with the state, there was some good... I think the mayor's administration struck a very good deal with the state to get quite a bit of money up front for something that they would have given, in quotes, to us anyway in short order, I'm convinced. And instead of being saddled with that unfunded mandate, we were able to obtain 10 million in total, 10 million of which is literally in the bank as we sit here, to fund a great portion of this project. And you know, as we move forward on other pieces of it, I will say there were those of us who wanted considerable greater amounts of certain aesthetic enhancements, and we scaled them back by 80 percent and added incentives to show our good faith in a compromise. And I believe, going literally, and I do mean literally, more than halfway, to achieve that compromise. And so with regard to this segment, I think we're all agreed that it's glad to see it get going, and I think it's important for people to know, especially people who might not have the benefit of all the time and study that we're able to and our positions have. So for those folks reading the paper, maybe getting this through a clip of the news or otherwise, that this is a project that will be done in phases so that even though it's a massive undertaking, Federal Highway 6, the reconstruction of it, at no time during traffic will there be any interruption in traffic either way, which adds considerably to the cost and the length of the time it'll take to do the project, but it'll ensure that no business will be cut off for even a day from being able to have access or the residents of this community either way. I think the council and the mayor have gone out of their way in the public input to ensure that we do the best we can to minimize the disruptions. And I think, like anything else, it's going to take work. It will be at times difficult, but this is how things are supposed to work, and we get it done. And I couldn't support it more.
All right, anything else? Just one quick point of clarification, in case Tim's right, and we got our first 10 million May 1st, and then in the second fiscal year, 2017, July 1st, we got the second 10 million, so that's 20 million total.
Thank you.
And one of the things I think that is important for citizens to do is during this construction timeframe, is to continue to patronize those businesses. While it may be a little more difficult to get there, it's truly important that these businesses can sustain themselves through the construction process, so make a concerted effort to continue to patronize the businesses. All right. That motion was to approve the plan with the exception of the bus shelters. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those same sign.
At this time, I would make a motion that we approve a resolution approving the plans and specifications for Segment One of West Broadway pertaining to bus shelters.
Second.
So the reason we're separating this is my family owns the bus benches on West Broadway, a number of them. There's a few we don't, so I will be abstaining from the vote with the second motion pertaining to bus shelters and bus benches.
All right, any need further discussion? Roll call.
Aye.
Aye.
Wiganburg?
Aye.
Standout?
Abstain.
Watson?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Clerk, resolutions.
Resolution 16-306, reconsideration of Resolution 13-306, reappointing Jody Quakenbush to the position of city clerk upon the retirement of current city clerk Marcy Ward.
Motion to take no action on the motion reconsidered.
Second.
All right, we have a first and a second. To take no action is their discussion.
Well, I'd ask for it to be put back on the agenda, although I am still in support of it. The reason I asked for it to be brought back was that the staff communication and the portion that most people read only indicated that we would be moving Jody into the position of clerk upon retirement of Marcy. But on the resolution, it increased the wages, increased the pay grade for that position, and that was not discussed, and it wasn't on the staff communication. So I felt that in the light of trying to be as clear as possible and transparent as possible, this needed to come forward again so that people could read the data that we received, the information we received in making those decisions.
And I supported that, and I also support the appointment of the new city clerk. I believe our deputy city clerk has done a phenomenal job and has proved herself on the job and has that requisite knowledge of both her certifications and education to lead to the position, but also, I believe, the experience, being the number two in the role, and often as such this evening filling in, and that's the sort of experience that money can't buy. I also think it's... The wage increase initially gave me some pause, frankly, but taking a look at it, I think among our sister cities, we're about the seventh largest city in the state, I believe by last count, and if you look at the other top 10 in size, this will move the salary into the median, that is, the middle range of our sister cities in the top 10. So I think we're staying within a reasonable range. I also would say that due to other reorganization that we, as a council, and the council has control over the clerk's office and the city attorney, and the mayor has supervisory control over the other departments. I don't think a lot of people know that, just so you know how that goes under the charter. I think if you look at the total amount that we will be spending, we are downgrading from a deputy clerk to administrative assistant. So the overall all amount of money, even with this increase, which I do believe is appropriate, because it'll put us in the middle of the road with our sister cities in our state, will actually spend a little bit, not a lot frankly, but a little bit less than we otherwise would have. So I think it's fiscally responsible. I appreciate their countervailing arguments, and I respect them, and they have weight to them. But for me, I think being in the middle of the road with our sister cities is a good place to peg our salary, and again, it's going to, in the end, save a little bit of money, not much, but a little bit.
And I would thank Councilwoman White and the mayor for bringing this up and for the discussion on this that we had earlier today. Transparency is always a good thing, and so I appreciate the efforts to make this part of the public record a little bit more clearly than it was before.
All right, so I am confused, and I don't know if anyone else is, but the motion was to take no action?
Correct.
As it was voted on last time.
This is allowed to be discussed.
Yeah.
Tom's good, I just thought that that meant we weren't going to do anything, and well, that doesn't work too well. All right, the motion is to take no action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those same sign.
Resolution to approve the annual financial report for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2016.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those same sign.
Resolution 16-318, assess unpaid costs of weed abatement against city property. It's not city property, against property, it is there, it's kind of cut off.
It is cut off on my end.
Yeah, it is cut off on my end.
So Resolution Two, assess the unpaid weed abatements.
Perfect.
Here we go.
Motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Is there a discussion?
Just, we're going through a series of organces, or excuse me, resolutions right now, where basically every so often, folks who don't pay, who have let weeds grow, I believe it's 18 inches or taller, or don't pay the garbage bill, rather than everybody else getting stuck paying for those who don't pay, which we, as a council, could decide to do, and we historically have decided instead to assess it against someone's property so that it goes onto their property tax bill, so even if they were to sell, which works with all owner-occupied properties rentals. State law doesn't allow us to do that. So when somebody would move, or they would refinance or what have you with their property, they end up having to pay instead of all the other taxpayers for their garbage bills or their failure to mow, or failure to remove junk from their yard. And so that's kind of these bills we're going through right here. We've been asked by the staff to agree to our historical practice of charging it against the people who are ultimately responsible, rather than you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those same sign.
16-1319, resolution to assess unpaid costs of solid waste abatements.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those same sign.
16-320, resolution abolishing within the Community Development Department the position of Assistant Planner and creating a new position of Planner.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those same sign.
16-321, resolution authorizing a joint application to the Iowa Economic Development Authority by the City of Council Bluff and Rasmussen Mechanical Services Inc. for the benefit under the High Quality Jobs Program and the Targeted Jobs Withholding Program.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion?
It's nice to see a company wanting, a local company wanting to expand and bring more jobs to the area. Our support will help. It's one of the criteria by which the state judges whether to provide certain benefits from the state to help businesses expand in an area rather than them going elsewhere. It's good for jobs.
Absolutely. And we say helping the business, that's on the cost of the increased investment that they're going to be putting in to their new facility. So given the fact that our state business taxation is as broken as it is, that we take an opportunity from time to time to relieve the tax burden for someone who wants to improve their property, and I wish we could do this on a more wide-scale basis. I think we'd see a lot more improvement. In fact, if we fixed our tax law, we'd see a lot more improvement, if anybody's listening out there. So this is a win for the city, it's a win for the public, it's a win for Rasmussen, and we certainly hope that they keep this project moving forward.
Any further discussions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those same sign.
Resolution 16-322, authorizing the mayor to submit a U.S. Environmental Protection Agency Brownfield Assessment Report.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those same sign.
16-323, resolution approving the calendar year 2017 budget for the Council Bluff's water.
I make a...
I'm sorry, motion to receive and file.
I will second that, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor of receiving and filing, say aye.
Aye.
All those same sign.
16-324, resolution for support of Rasmussen Mechanical Services Inc. Grayfield redevelopment tax credit application for the property located at 3211 Nebraska Avenue.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Again, another source of funding for the state, grayfields, areas where there's already existing, rather than the so-called greenfield, that is urban sprawl on the edges of the community or elsewise, usually on the edge. Grayfield, an area that already has some existing building on it, where we've already, you and I, we've all paid for streets and other things to be put in that area, and it's a way of trying to get unused or underused areas that bit private business wants to use those existing areas. And it costs more to go into those areas than the newer areas to build in in an existing city, but it's so much better. It saves money in the end, and it's better for jobs and the environment. So this is yet another application to the state for the monies they make available to try to help companies do the right thing for jobs and the environment.
I'd just like to thank the Rasmessens for expanding and investing in our community and staying here. You guys have been here a long time, and we appreciate it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those same sign.
Applications for permits and cancellations, 9A 1 through 7.
Motion to approve 9A 1 through 7.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those same sign. Madam Clerk, any citizens requesting to be heard?
None received.
Anyone from the audience like to address the council?
Bruce Kelly, 864 McKenzie Avenue. On November 23rd, about a lot of me, and I think the city approved to build a trail going from Kmart going north of Alottown. My deal is to make better access for the bikers, we should finish the stretch over the top of the hill. It'd be a lot. I don't think there is any other portion that really connects to...
I tell you, people are hearing you, because in the last 10 days, I've heard two people request the same thing, so it's growing.
It's growing.
62,997 more. No. Honestly, Bruce, that's a true statement. I've had two people say the same exact thing.
And I hope that our senator-elect, Mr. Dawson, is here tonight and recognize that what I've been doing for over the last two years on this one subject.
Considering the jurisdiction of the road, he would be of great assistance in this regard.
All right, thank you. Anybody else?
Thanks, Bruce.
Anyone from the council?
I just want to wish everyone happy holidays. This is a year in which Christmas and Hanukkah coincide, strangely enough. It doesn't always work out that way on the two calendars, but whatever individuals may celebrate or not, I hope everybody has a blessed and happy Christmas, Hanukkah, or otherwise this year.
And just be safe out there, everyone. We won't see everybody till 2017, so...
I would just like to say, after, this is my last meeting, my first year on council, I hope that everybody that's supporting me and I earned their vote, that they're happy with their vote, and I've learned a ton over the last year. I mean, more than you could ever imagine. Matt said to me that for one year, in your first year on council, it's had a lot of things going on, and I believe that's true. So I appreciate the support, and I hope I continue to have your support.
I would tell you, it's probably, in my 21 years, been a year unlike any other for the amount of things that have come through, and so maybe we'll have a little more relaxing in 2017.
Don't make promises you can't hear.
I do want to wish everybody...
I hope not.
I too do want to wish everybody and their families a Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays, and I think 2016 has been a good year, and I'm really looking forward to 2017. I see Council Bluff's doing wonderful things and becoming a place that businesses like the Rasmessens want to continue to be in and grow in, and I think we've got a lot of great things coming next year, so I look forward to it.
Anyone else? Happy holidays and Merry Christmas. Thank you, Urgeon. Thank you.